You can make it stand up, right?
I was gonna say it'll fall, or so turn your, turn your, your bad side please. You set it on the left.
Well, I do like that guy did in the House of Representatives. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a, uh, regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Holiday Island for October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For Jerry and, uh, Linda in?
Linda, yes. Jerry, no.
Okay. Right, uh, we'll call.
Okay, councilmember Dumas?
Here.
Councilmember Elwood?
Here.
Councilmember Graves? She's saying?
Is she speaking? She's not. She's, she's here.
She's here.
She's present via Zoom, and she'd be via proxy.
Okay. Councilmember Coon?
Here.
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Pittman? Excused.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll declare a quorum. Guess I would lay confirmation at some point that Linda's gonna be able to join for voting.
I'm all over it.
Okay. Um, we have an agenda that's been distributed. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All right, um, Barb made a motion to approve the agenda. Can second it? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have minutes from the September thirteenth meeting that were distributed.
September nineteenth.
Uh, September nineteenth, correct. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move, move September nineteen minutes.
Lynn made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Come on, I'll second it.
That second it is?
I'm reading.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved. Uh, any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or in memoriam? Okay, and we'll move on. Financial statements, Wes?
Ah, yes.
Look up on the screen.
Okay. You can see, we ended the month of September with six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in the bank. There was two hundred thousand in checking, a combination of seventy-five thousand in the reserve, seventy of that being in a C D. And in the street fund, there's three hundred and sixty-two thousand with three sixty of that being in the money market. Questions?
Barb, did you have a question?
No, I said that's good that you got this.
Okay, then I'll go on to the general fund statement, uh, revenue, uh, twenty-six thousand. The county sales tax was good in the month of September, twenty-three thousand eight hundred, uh, twenty-four fifty-eight in municipal aid. You can say we're seventy-five percent of the way through the year, and we've received seventy-three percent of our estimated, uh, sales tax, a budget sales tax, and eighty percent in municipal aid. And probably all of the, uh, property tax relief that we're gonna receive. Businesses licenses, there was none during September, no fines. Uh, there was two hundred dollars worth per minute. And so our total revenue was twenty-six five seventy-four, bringing us to two thirty-seven oh three for the year to date. Uh, so we've got three months to go yet. Uh, expenses, uh, going down in the administrative. You'll note, we had twenty-one thousand four ninety-four in miscellaneous expense. That was a check to, uh, Pinnacle I T, which was stolen out of the mail. The check was fourteen ninety-four twenty-five, and somebody added a two on the front, made it twenty-one. Uh, and I reported that to the bank when I spotted it, uh, at the end of the month during the reconciliation, and reported it, and filed the reports, and that's been re-deposited to our account.
And that'll show up the next month's day.
It'll show up. It'll be, um, what it is, show it as a credit in miscellaneous expense.
Good.
So, uh, that will get eliminated. So our, uh, total other expense there was twenty-four thousand because of that check. Building in construction, uh, twenty-three hundred in salaries. Other expenses were a hundred and eighty-four. Code enforcement was seven fifteen, bringing us to forty-four seventy-eight for the year. Let's see, that is, that's code enforcement, okay. District court, no expenses, uh, for the month. We'll be getting into that probably. Uh, planning commission had some, uh, three hundred and eighty in legal fees and a hundred and eighty-six dollars in other expenses. Uh, that is the ninety-two dollars every month for security, uh, computer security. Sixty-four dollars for notice publications. And you get down to public safety. Uh, we had three hundred dollars a month for rent on the over here, bringing up to twenty-seven hundred, uh, year to date. Got sixty thousand nine hundred in the sheriff contract. That included the purchase of, uh, the, uh, s- uh, vehicle for the new deputy. And that was a little over fifty thousand, and I believe that was, also, that was July and August sheriff's contract. So that brings our total expense there to seventy-seven thousand. We had budgeted one fifty-five, five eighty-four for the year. So we're at about fifty percent of our budget there, and we'll have, um, three months sheriff's contract left to pay, and that runs so far with one deputy, it's about five thousand a month. Solid waste, and a hundred and ninety-two dollars for a dumpster, four hundred and seventy-five dollars for legal fees. So our total expenses were a hundred and one thousand dollars for the month compared to our budget of three forty-two. And it's a two twenty-three year to date. So when we get that twenty-one thousand back, we would be about a hundred thousand, uh, year to date. So three-fourths of the way through the year, we'd be at two-thirds of our budget. Then, as we go on. In the street fund, we had just under twenty thousand in revenue for the month, bringing us to about a hundred and ninety-six thousand year to date, and you can see, and apparently at the state, they have changed their way of allocating revenue when they report it to us. Because our biggest source of revenue, um, had been four-lane highway, and now it's one of the smallest. And you can see, we had fifteen thousand in fuel tax revenue. So we're running under budget on four-lane highway and highway severance. We're under budget right now, we're at fifty-one percent of our budget for property tax, but our big months probably should be November and December property tax receipts. And we're over budget on the fuel tax, we're at eighty-two percent of the year to date. Expenses, we've only had three hundred and thirty-two dollars so far this year. So at the end of the year, we ended up with, or at the end of September, we ended up with three hundred and sixty-two thousand in the bank. And...
We do have to make our annual payment to I C S though, but before the end of the year.
Right.
For road maintenance.
And that, let's see, we've got, um, twenty-five thousand in the budget for that. And will we have any expense for signs?
Uh, not, I mean, if they don't give me a list of what they need, we won't.
Yeah.
I've asked a couple of times.
Okay. And then the pay, the payments journal, um, is shown here, the individual checks. And again, there's that twenty-one thousand four ninety-four counterfeit check.
I believe that was out of North Little Rock Post Office again.
Probably.
That's the second time.
That's the second time. Oh, we had one, not, the last time they didn't alter the amount here, they added twenty thousand. So I don't know if somebody, if they're getting it back, or some bank is on the hook, or what.
And how you would use that? How would you alter the? You can alter the number, but how do you?
They, Percy, they take a picture of the check, and with the, the quality of the digital equipment and printers and everything now, they can take a picture of the check, alter what they want, and then they sell that altered image on the internet. To, and then somebody will buy it and cash it.
You could tell in looking at the checks and compare it with our checks. There's, uh, bordered around our checks, and that was different. And Nicole at the bank said, well, the font is different too. I guess I'm not that good at it, but, so you could tell they had printed their own check and put in our signatures. So, as a result, we'll, I hope, we'll talk about electronic payments.
A little later.
Later. Because it's not safe sending a check at least to North Little Rock.
Barb, any questions on the financial statement?
I have. Uh, the rent, fourteen sixty-six, is that, is that, we still paying I C S?
We're there.
And that twelve hundred?
We're going back to where?
Administrative costs. It's been, yeah.
Maybe I'm right.
One more. Right there. Yeah. It's right on top of the screen. Right here.
Oh. Oh, let's see.
Cause we're not supposed to pay in rent here for about six months.
At the first of the year, we start paying.
See, the rent. Okay, so there was two twelve, or twelve twelve.
Twelve, twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, twelve hundred, check number seven one fifty.
Yeah. So the difference would be two fifty-four. I wonder if something got in the wrong account.
I don't know. I just know.
There, oh, there it is, post office box.
Yeah, it's post office.
It's in the right account, and it is rent. It's for our post office box.
That's the annual cost of the post office box, I think.
So seven one fifty is your account number?
Yeah.
Okay.
How much is the post office box?
Two hundred and fifty-four dollars a year.
Four, for a year. Actually, when you pay a year in advance, you get a free month.
Is that much higher for a business or something?
Well, and the size of the box, the size of the box.
Depends on the size of the box.
Ours is bigger.
Ours is eleven by eleven, I think, is that?
You get a lot of money, do you, in a box?
I'll move that we approve the financials.
Lynn moved to approve the financials. We have a second?
Seven.
Barb seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Financials are approved. Uh, Lynn?
We should say accepted.
Excuse me?
Accepted, yeah.
All right. The Holiday Island City Planning Commission has a hearing scheduled for November fourteenth at six P M. in this room. Uh, it's, uh, filled with a schedule full of, uh, initial use applications for short-term, short-term rental. And, uh, there are eighteen applications that have been filed that we'll be, uh, hearing, public hearing comments on, and considering resolutions to approve them. This information should be in today's newspaper, the Carroll County News, and after that appears, and I'll put a splash out on social media. But it's available on the website through these links. All the details are on the brief documents, and then the resolutions are in the, uh, I mean, for, for Farina, there's a, another link for the document itself for all the resolutions. There's two hundred and forty-eight pages, if you're curious, in the, uh, in the brief.
And we're setting these up in some sort of a database that's address searchable and?
I have an Excel spreadsheet created with all the details in it that, um, will be available after we get this set on. And it'll have links to open the documents and all in your.
That'll be important when we get into the enforcement phase.
Yes, sir. Fire department report is on the screen.
Fire department report. Let me, uh, pull that up here. Cause I did a little bit of summarization.
Okay.
Just, um, not that we can do anything about it, or it needs to have anything done about it, but I thought it was interesting that, uh, there were seventy-five incidences on the report, calls for service. And, um, fifty of them were for E M S. Fifteen on Park Drive, which I assume was Beach Street, and seven on Hillside, which I assume was Prestige. And then it drops way down, so, so two-thirds of all the calls are E M S, uh, medical E M S. Then there were four invalid assist, which is kind of medical. Three motor vehicle accidents with injuries, three motor vehicle accident without injuries, five dispatched and canceled en route, one watercraft rescue, two gas leaks, both at the same location. One hazard condition, one wrong address, one public service, two smoke detector, uh, false alarms, and, uh, one accident slash other. Interestingly enough, missing from this report, anything to do with fire. Apparently.
It's good, no fire, no structure fires.
Yeah, apparently there were no structure fires or anything, at least that our fire department responded to in September. So we have much more an E M S department than a fire department.
Yeah.
And they're, they're good at it.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, I saw either in the newspaper or, or in the email news updates, that I think it's Fayetteville now has helicopter rescue in remote areas and so on. I wonder if we had a need, or they could do water rescues, would they be available here?
There's a company that does that. You can get a membership for, I mean, you can get it, it's like one year, three years, five years. And it does, it does helicopters. And it'll helicopter you, like, from your location to the hospital, and you can also additionally tip different back.
This is where, like, lower a team from a rope into the lake, or whatever, to rescue people and bring them up.
Okay.
Or into the trees.
We already got it.
Is it true?
We already got it. Boat?
We got a boat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do we do?
She's, yeah.
Kid's boat, same boat.
An inspiration point of investigating any.
Just the race of boys, is? Wow.
Okay, um, any other questions on the fire department report? Moving on to the Carroll County Sheriff's Office report. I did a similar breakdown. There were a hundred and twenty-five responses. Thirty-three of them were medical emergencies. Sixteen were follow-up, and I, I need to ask Deputy Bilbo what follow-up means. Uh, eight lift assist, so I guess when the department responds, if, uh, Deputy Bilbo is here, he comes with them. Five welfare checks. I didn't break up all of the categories on, under this, but thirty-eight percent of the total called said something to do with medical, either medical emergency, lift assist, welfare check, suicidal person or citizen assist. Twenty percent had something to do with criminal activity or people acting badly, like fights and domestic disputes. And then thirteen percent was traffic and vehicle accidents, so there's, you know. Jeff stays real busy here, but it's helping people for speeding. And he's, he's full-time busy doing other things, and since I'm right next door to him now every day, I, um, am starting to get an appreciation for how often he meets with citizens up here to go over their problems, probably. So, uh, he does stay busy. Now, I did see this weekend, I did see a different car, a different county patrol vehicle out here patrolling, so maybe we're getting close to them actually fulfilling the contract of providing two deputies out.
We haven't got any feedback from them.
I haven't talked to him about two weeks, and he said that first week of November, he thought we'd have a couple. But never know when somebody's gonna quit, so that's been the problem all along. He's been hiring people all along, it's just that they quit just about as fast as he can hire them.
Yeah, I went through that.
That's, you know, that's gonna be something that, that's gonna be, that's something the J P's have to address, because until, until the county starts paying their deputies more, they're just gonna be a training ground for everybody else around here. Any questions on the police report, sheriff's report? Uh, code enforcement, I really don't, I don't have a report tonight. Aaron's father passed away last, early last week, and he's the executor of that estate, so he's been tied up. And, uh, I haven't talked to him yet since he's, I'm not totally sure he's even back yet. So I will be touching base with him this week to, um, get that back going again. There was another pothole in the road to a smoothly operating code enforcement operation. Back when we got the district court agreement finalized, finalized, the, um, court clerk asked for a copy of all of our ordinances that had, you know, citations and penalties associated with them. And she said she had to load those into her system. Well, as much my fault as anybody's, it never dawned on me that when we change an ordinance or replace an ordinance, they need to know that. They need to have a copy of the ord-. So the citations that Aaron wrote, uh, he wrote them to just in greatest ordinance. When they got over there, at least one of them didn't match up to the ordinance they had on file. So Linda and Aaron, this all happened when Jerry and I were out west. So Linda and Aaron got that all straightened out with the district court clerk, and, um, that's something we're just gonna have to stay on top of. And, um, you know, it, I, I don't, Linda tried to explain to me their system, but it's, it's apparently quite cumbersome. And, and, um, so the more we change ordinances that have fines and penalties associated with them, the more, uh, disliked we're, we're going to be by the, uh, the clerk. Because I, I think it's a fairly manual system where they have to take, you know, sections of our ordinance and basically, I think, type it into a database that then gets sent off to someplace else that creates the documents for the court docket. And, um, you know, and they were staffed over in Eureka Springs to handle Eureka Springs. And now we're throwing all this work on top of them. And since we're new and, and prone to make a lot of changes and passing a lot of new ordinances, because we're learning as we go, um, you know, we're probably, you know, many times more workload for them than what Eureka Springs is, who's probably had passed an ordinance in twenty years, because everything is pretty stable and functioning. So anyway, um, it's something we're gonna have to work with them on. Uh, and hopefully someday, our changes to our ordinances will slow down a little bit.
Well, so the two cases are still on course.
As far as I know.
Third of November.
Yeah, as far as I know. Right.
We haven't got any new ones down yet.
Under broadband, um, there's really no activity right now. Our county committee has turned in all of their, they turned in their final report, and Sandy did a, just a fantastic job on that. So we're just kinda waiting now for the, the state to tell us what, uh, Carroll County is gonna get. And I have no idea what the timeline is on those, on that decision-making process. You know, I kinda thought when we first started on this project as a county, that we were maybe behind the curve, behind everybody else. Turns out, we were way ahead of everybody else, and they actually used Carroll County's approach to putting together the data and the report and everything else as the gold standard for all the other counties to use, so, um...
Who goes to Sandy?
Yeah, so Sandy Martin did an excellent job. All right.
They're still look the same.
They're not.
Ordinance twenty-three oh twenty-one, this is the second reading.
I thought twenty-three twenty-one was our ordinance to pass zero tax.
You didn't read the updates.
You haven't been catching up with all of the, uh...
When did you update?
Two days ago.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I just pulled this up today.
We had a...
Off the website?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, if, if you pull up an old email, then yours are numbered correctly.
Oh, crap.
We had a numbering snafu.
It's just, it's just the number of the ordinance, so the difference.
The Texas is all the same.
Texas is the same.
Yep.
Just follow it.
We have renumbered twice.
Follow the ball, bouncing ball.
When I downloaded it and I saw the same numbers, I assumed it was, okay. I'll read it off that.
All right, next on the agenda then, under old business, is the second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-one, twenty... All right, next on the agenda then, under old business is the second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three. Twenty-twenty-three dash oh twenty-one.
Yeah.
Consumption of liquor by the drink.
You know, that screen is nicer, but there's two of us sitting here that have no damn idea what's up there.
You want me to get you a mirror?
Mr. Mills, I will fix that at the next meeting, I'm gonna put a TV set down here in your direction, you'll have it.
You'll have your own teleprompter.
I'll fix it.
Okay. Or could write rearrange the furniture, can we?
No.
Can't, the.
The answer's yes.
I can see the reflection in the window down there.
I can.
I couldn't do that.
Well, you need another mirror then.
Right, it'd be backwards anyway.
You'll, you'll read that mirror backwards and then another mirror to make that.
Perfect for Ken.
We're moving.
I'll get you a screen.
We'll, we'll work something up.
All right, seriously now.
So, do you wanna talk about waiving the second reading and passing this, or just?
I think it'd be easier.
Just do the second reading.
I do the second reading, don't we?
Yeah, we, I'm, I'm not an expert on Robert's Rules of Order, but I think we can motion to waive the second reading and pass this ordinance tonight on the third reading. But I am not sure of that, and so I am not recommending that we do that. It's not an urgent, um, ordinance anyway, so if we can do the second reading tonight, my recommendation would be to do the second reading tonight, do the third reading at the next meeting.
By title only?
And then, huh?
By title.
And you only, you only have to read it on the first reading.
Okay.
Oh, so we.
That came for a sentence.
Okay, so entertain a motion that we, uh, pass, that we consider, vote. How do we do that, that we vote?
That you approve, uh, uh, ordinance by reading the second only, in the second reading, you approve a second reading.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh twenty-one by title only.
So.
Laura made a motion to that second. All right, um, I'll go ahead and read it. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash oh twenty-one, an ordinance to repeal and, and replace ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh oh eight in its entirety and authorizing amended regulations for the on-premises sale and consumption of the drink in the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. And basically, just to refresh everybody's memory, all we're doing is changing the time that liquor can be served. Um, from, it was eleven o'clock, we're changing it to seven o'clock in the morning for the benefit of restaurants that wanna have beverages with brunch. Is there any discussion?
Seven o'clock's.
Move to roll call vote.
Okay, Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
She's here, she can.
Aye.
She said aye.
I heard it.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes, um, four to one, it would be, right?
There should be five votes. There should be five votes.
Four to one is five.
Four to one, yeah.
Four to one, I only hit three, okay, four to one, so that four is a majority, so it passes on the second reading. And we'll do the third reading at, uh, next month's meeting. All right, moving on to appointing Randy Roloff to BOZA.
Oh, what a name.
No, no, it's Boza.
Um, we have a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Adjustment, and Randy, who is a new member of the Planning Commission, has offered to, uh, serve if, uh, if approved, so I will, um, I
Make a motion.
Request a ru- a motion to appoint Randy Roloff to the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Randy.
I'll second.
All right, Pat made a motion to accept, Lynn seconded it, any discussion?
Lynn, would you give, give, and I'm, I'm trying to remember where the, this fits into the process. The BOZA, the zoning is adjustments, right?
Yes, the Board of Zoning Adjustment is there to handle the appeals uh, made by decisions of the city official, that being our building inspector. If he were to turn down a permit because someone wants to build a structure that encroaches on an easement, he has to say no, and they can appeal that decision of his to the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Okay, it has nothing to do with the Planning Commission, really?
No, typically not.
Okay.
The BOZA does not have authority to change zoning, and it does not have authority to approve uses that aren't zoned.
It had to do with over, you know, an override of a previous decision, and I didn't know, I couldn't remember who made.
Typically, typically a decision of the building inspector.
Okay, got you.
In permitting.
Thank you.
All right, um, any other discussion? I'll just call for a boy's vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 That was an aye?
That was an aye, one hundred percent.
Congratulations, Randy, you got another job.
Thank you. She's slow, she needs to hurry it up.
Yeah, she was good, she was good.
All right, next on the agenda.
About eight thousand miles away.
Next, I will accept, uh, I will request a, a, a motion to, to pass resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash zero zero nine, a resolution adopting policy for publishing, posting, and notification requirements for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Before we get to the motion, um, the only change in here is the location of where the posting signs are. We, since we have one in the hallway up here now, I updated this document to reflect that. So I'll now entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accrue regu- uh, the resolution twenty-twenty-three dash zero zero nine, and I'll second it.
All right, Ken made a motion to pass, and Pat seconded it. I'll read the resolution by title only. Resolution adopting policy for publishing, posting, and notification requirements for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Any discussion?
Yes, um, I had a little bit of confusion when I was reading it, and I'm gonna jump around a little bit. Uh, on page one, I think we should change the order of the approved locations, making number one four and number four one. And the reason I wanna do that is because on the affidavit on page four, we talk about, uh, doing something in the financial statements in the first two public places designated. And the first two, one is the district office. Will be the district office and Sunfest is where we would post these financials, and I think it should be City Hall rather than the district office.
Probably, and where do you see that, um?
On page seven.
Yeah.
Page seven.
I got it sorted up now, but I didn't roll it in. Yeah, 'cause we mentioned, uh, on page seven, we said number one was the city office, it isn't, it's the district office according to this note. And the city office is number four, so I say in, in section three on page one of seven, we change the order of those five places to be, number one being City Hall. And then two, number one, which is.
Actually, actually, one of them is incorrect, because we don't post in two places at the city office. So.
Yeah, okay, I thought that was a little confusing as well.
One is. I don't know that the numbering on this page was intended to match the numbering on this page, but it might as well.
That was just my confusion, I said it was number one.
Closing doors. Lobby four is city office. Five is the district office. The only one that was wrong on the post, proof of posting was number one. And then somewhere you said we referred to posting.
Yeah, let me get back to that.
At two.
Sure, I said that correctly. I was on page two or.
One of them should be outside the district office.
So one, one in City Hall and then one out, one outside the district office, is what you're checking on there? Okay, so we just changed the.
I, I wouldn't say that should be numbered one, I'm just saying that's not listed up there.
Well, outside is number one on the list.
Oh, okay, you're right.
Inside is the number five.
Yeah, so that's a two, I said.
They're all listed properly in section two.
They are?
Well, I mean, the details of where they are is correct. I'm like, Dan, I don't think the, the order is important here, but.
I want, I want you to get further back to it.
What, where is outside the entrance to City Hall?
We're not doing outside.
There is one outside the entrance to City Hall.
Well, right, so that's not correct.
Oh, it says outside City Hall. You're right, that is wrong.
So that should read the bulletin board in the entrance to City Hall.
Yeah.
I got that. Is that it?
Yeah, so we still have in two A, um, you have that as the number four thing, and in five B, you say you're intending to post it in the first two public places designated in two A.
So those.
So which two places are we going to post?
Die into another place and where I have to post the annual financial statements, and I think that reads, then it's gonna be outside Highstead, isn't it? And in Sunfest, which sounded okay to me.
Yeah, that way they're accessible almost twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
So that's where you wanted to post financials?
The financials, yeah, because those are open twenty-four seven, you don't have any locked doors in front of them.
Yeah, okay, I just thought Sunfest was a nice place to be posted.
Oh, yes, they're not opening, are they open twenty-four hours?
No.
No, but they're open sixteen or eighteen hours, right?
Okay, okay.
So instead of saying the first two public places, we wanna say.
Well, that's fine.
No, it's okay the way they have it.
You're good.
If we leave, if we leave this three alone.
Yeah, yeah.
And they won't even listen to that word.
Okay, all right.
So no change. Except for the, uh, two A, number four, you changed outside to.
Two A and four needs to change, and you gotta fix the, the brief, the, uh, proof. Number four's messed up, or number one's messed up, one of the.
Yeah.
It's on page seven, Chris, for.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Yeah, one should say district office.
Okay.
And then four should say City Hall, is at.
Okay. Any other discussion?
That's all I have.
Then I will call a roll call vote on the, uh, resolution as amended.
Okay, Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
She said aye.
Okay, Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Bettman. That's absolutely, okay, there he goes.
All right.
Five to zero.
The resolution passes. Moving on, uh, I'll entertain a motion to pass ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash zero two-two, an ordinance levying a tax on real and personal property in the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Uh, now, before I ask for a motion, let me give you a little background, and we can do a little discussion before we get into the motion. We, we have to, by law, we have to notify the county of what our intended tax mileage is for next year, in time for them to consider it when they're doing the county budget. I don't know for sure if the county, um, board does their, um, final budgeting in November or December, I think many years, in many, many years it drags on into December, but nevertheless, it would be best for them to have this information earlier rather than later. Uh, I did send out a draft budget that basically Wes put together, and I massaged a little bit, showing that, um, given the carryover revenue that we're gonna have from this year, that we would not need to levy a tax next year for any reason. And so I am deposing by this ordinance to have a zero mil tax. So now I will ask for an ordinance to, ask for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash zero twenty-two, an ordinance levying a tax on real and personal property in the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas for the calendar year twenty-twenty-four, and declaring an emergency, and if we get a motion in a second, we'll read the, uh, ordinance, and then we'll open up the session.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-three zero two-two.
Ken made a motion to approve, you'll have a second?
Second.
Laura seconded it, I'll read the ordinance then. Whereas Arkansas Code Annotated ACA twenty-six dash seventy-three dash two zero two states that the governing body of the city or town must certify the rate of taxation levied by the county clerk annually, and whereas this must be done prior to the time fixed by law for the forum court to levy taxes, Arkansas Code Annotated ACA fourteen, fourteen nine zero four, now be it ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that section one, real property mileage for maintenance and operations, a tax of zero mils is hereby levied on all real property within the city limits of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section two, personal property mileage for maintenance and operation, a tax of zero mils is hereby levied on all personal property within the city limits of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section three, the city recorder treasurer is hereby directed to file a copy of this ordinance with the Carroll County clerk as soon as possible after the passage of this ordinance. Emer- emergency clause, since this ordinance is required to be submitted to the county forum court prior to the levying meeting, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effective immediately upon passage, passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of ten twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Aye.
I heard. Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
All right, the ordinance passes, I just made one copy of this, uh, maybe you run a copy and then sign it?
Make a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Oh, good idea.
I seconded it.
Since, uh, there is an emergency clause, Ken made a motion to approve the emergency clause, you have a second?
I seconded.
Pat seconded it. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Okay, Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Five in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the emergency clause passes, thank you, Ken, for catching that.
I would like. Except for five news on this.
Just because.
It had something else.
I, I hugged you one, I told Peggy twenty.
Twenty.
Are you, that's illegal, you only go five. That's me again.
Alright, I'll know, uh, next up on the agenda is ordinance twenty-two-three dash zero-two-three. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-three dash zero-two-three. An ordinance amending the planning and zoning regulations by adding zoning district DP deficient property to the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Lynn made a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ken seconded it. You wanna read it, sure?
Sure. Whereas on about October fourth, twenty-twenty-two, the city of, city council of Holiday Island adopted ordinance twenty-two dash six to provide planning and zoning regulations, a zoning map and a zoning map table for within the city. Whereas the city planning commission and city council acted in good faith to accurately record zoning information within the city boundaries for unit block lot designations from the available declaration of reservations. And whereas the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has determined it necessary to revise the planning and zoning regulations for the entire area of Holiday Island to provide districts of compatible uses for unified development for the elimination of non-conformants and for other matters of general welfare of the city. And whereas pursuant to ACA fourteen fifty-six, four twenty-two, one A, the HICPC conducted a public hearing on the matter of adopting and recommending amendments to the planning and zoning regula- regulations by resolution HICPC R twenty-three dash eleven on October tenth, twenty-three to the city council. And whereas the city council of Holiday Island now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island and desires to amend the planning and zoning regulations by ordinance, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section one, that the amendments to the planning and zoning regulations for the city of Holiday Island attached herein and detailed in the following attachments are hereby adopted. Attachment A is section six oh one, attachment B is six oh two, attachment C is seven twelve, attachment D is seven thirteen. Section two, that the planning and zoning regulations shall be updated, reprinted, duly certified, filed with the city recorder treasurer in the city office and made available on the city website within thirty days. Section three, declaration of an emergency, it's hereby found and determined that the amendments to the planning and zoning regulations should be adopted immediately in order to provide for an appropriate zoning district for within the city of Holiday Island and to align with the understanding and urgent development desires of interested persons. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist in this act being immediately necessary for the preservation and protection of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the city and its citizens shall become effective on the date of its passage and approval by the mayor, passed and approved this date. The attachment in section six oh one is a definite, where they're defined. And the addition is the DP at the bottom of the list, efficient property. Attachment B is a section for the hierarchy of how things are considered if there's a, a problem with the building next to one. And the DP is added to the list behind the, uh, the three that were already there. In section C or attachment C, it defines, uh, what the DP property is all about. It has characteristics that do not permit another zoning classification, classification including but not limited to any of the following conditions. Insufficient size, unusual configuration, lack of both water and sewer service availability, or extreme topography. The A, B, and C, D are thorough explanations of that. There's a graphic showing how the, uh, extreme dark topography would be measured. And I note that it's from the property line, not from the road edge to thirty feet back and then the change in elevation. Nine foot, or thirty percent up lots and forty percent down lots. Attachment D, uh, it talks about the uses. No commercial uses are allowed, no residential uses are allowed, no structures designed are allowed, no storage of materials, both trailers, equipment, or vehicles is allowed. Development of the lot is limited to an entrance to the lot over an approved culvert if the need necessary by Hy-Sid. And a maintained vehicle pathway through the lot with optional fencing as permitted in section twenty-one oh six, A through E, that may be constructed along the twenty-five foot setback from the back property line. Development described in this section seven dot one-three requires a building permit at zero cost that may be approved by the city building inspector. And then the renumbering of the following. Those are the attachments.
Any discussion?
Can you give a little background?
Yeah, I'd like some, a little.
The, um.
Obviously something prompted this to come up.
Yeah, we're just, we're just good.
I, yeah, ten, two o'clock appeared to be something.
Hy-Sid has, uh, been working with a property owner outside the city limits and outside the district's limits that has become the, it's surrounded now, uh, what do they call it?
Land block.
It's a land block property. And apparently in the state of Arkansas, landlocked properties are not approved or allowed, so they need to have access. There's a concern from Hy-Sid that it might end up in a courtroom and a judge would decide to tell them, oh, the quickest and easiest way to get to your property is at the end of Sunview Lane, I think is what it is. Or Cherokee Lane, excuse me, at the end of Cherokee Lane. Because it's only a few feet compared to the three-quarter mile you's going through somebody else's property. So the, the negotiation that's been worked, working on, apparently, and I, I won't hear this third hand or second hand at least, that Hy-Sid is willing to create a lot at the end of Cherokee Lane by subdividing a parcel that they own to give this person access to their property off of Cherokee Lane. And creating that lot would, uh, give them access and it would give Hy-Sid some control on how it's developed. And they needed a zoning, or we need, the city needs a zoning for every lot. And the lot is too small, it's on like fifty feet across the street. It's like thirty-five feet back and seventy-five, whatever, it's too small for anything. And the city has no desire, at least the planning commission, commission has no desire to allow them to put a shed on it or store cars on it or any other purpose, so they wrote this resolution to approve and recommended what you see here today. Recommended the city. Uh, Hy-Sid's intention is to sell the lot and collect an assessment on an annual basis from this property owner.
So in the whole of Holiday Island, we're gonna have one lot, were this on?
Uh, MA?
For right now.
For right now.
Right. But.
I knew there had to be a story, when I read that, I said, there had to be some story here that I'm not familiar with.
So.
Okay.
You know, and what the planning commission worked with was, you know, insufficient size, it's too small to be developed into anything else to call something else. That it, uh, its unusual configuration, and by, by its shape, you couldn't even put a ten by twelve structure on it of storage shed and still stay within the easements. So it does have water service going past it, but, um, it, it's, uh, it's for other purpose, you know, it's for this, this purpose. So we can zone this lot that they may want to create.
Now it makes sense.
And there's, there's been discussion that this might be appropriate for someone that has a lot that's very steep from their property line to, to, uh, set aside, or some properties might need to be set aside just so that unsuspecting buyers from Florida and California and, and Taiwan wanna come and buy our property and find out, oh, I can't build on that property, maybe it would be a DP type property zone. But, you know, the concern that was expressed in the public hearing part of it, uh, one of the, one of the members of the public said, well, you're gonna have all these lots turned back because they're all gonna turn into DPs. Well, one of the criteria is it, it has to not have water and sewer. I think every lot in Holiday Island has water and sewer, so we can't call it DP if it has water and sewer. As a lack that, so there are a lot of parcels that lack that. And in the case of this parcel at the end of, of Cherokee Lane, it, and that parcel doesn't have it.
Understand now.
Okay.
Any other discussion? We'll move on to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Link her up. I know, we lost her, no, she's here.
Let's look it for her.
I can't believe she's taking on that.
She's on her third Mai Tai.
Like this word.
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Coon. Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Five in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the ordinance passes and this has an emergency clause, so I.
Make a motion to approve the declaration of an emergency.
I'll second.
Pat made a motion to approve the emergency clause. Lynn seconded it, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Five in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, it passes. This one also, I had to get a second copy for signatures. Alright, um, moving on, next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty-two-three dash zero-two-four. An ordinance amending the planning and zoning regulation by permitting conditional use of short-term rentals in the C-one neighborhood commercial district for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-three oh twenty-four?
So move.
Who made the motion?
Lynn.
Lynn made the motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
Ken seconded it. Lynn, you wanna read it?
Whereas on about October fourth, twenty-two, the city council of Holiday Island adopted ordinance twenty-two dash six to provide planning and zoning regulations, a zoning map, a zoning map table for within the city. Whereas the city planning commission and city council acted in good faith to accurately record zoning information within the city boundaries for unit block lot designations for the available declarations from the available declarations, reservations. And whereas the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has determined it necessary to amend the planning and zoning regulations by resolution HICPC R twenty-three dash twelve on October tenth, twenty-three, regarding the use of short-term rentals in C-one neighborhood commercial district of Holiday Island to provide districts of compatible uses for unified development for the elimination of non-conformants and for other matters of general welfare of the city. And whereas it constitutes an exceptional circumstance that the city council of Holiday Island now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island desires to amend the planning and zoning regulations by ordinance, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section one, that short-term rentals shall be a cons- a conditional use in commercial districts C-one in the planning and zoning regulations, section seven oh five, commercial districts and industrial uses table. And hereby adopted as illustrated below. So for short-term rentals in the C-one, change the chart from not permitted to C. Section two, that the planning and zoning regulations shall be updated, reprinted, duly certified, filed with the city recorder treasurer in the city office and made available on the city website within thirty days. Section three, declaration of emergency, it's hereby found and determined that the amendments to the planning and zoning regulations should be adopted immediately in order to provide an appropriate zoning district for within the city of Holiday Island and to align with the understanding and urgent development desires of interested persons. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist in this act being immediately necessary for the preservation and protection of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the city. And its citizens shall become effective on the date of its passage and approval by the mayor, passed and approved this date.
Okay, any discussion?
Little background, this came from an application for a short-term rental, um, for, I think it's Bluewater Circle. And that particular neighborhood is owned C-one. And in researching that, I found that it was not permitted. So rather than file or rather than stop that process, I went further and looked at all the properties in C-one, their own C-one, and includes two groups. It's all the houses along Bluewater and Taylor Rock Landing, that's all they have for C-one and all of Holiday Island. So the planning commission had a discussion and determined that, well, they're all residential in neighborhood already. And, uh, C-one, uh, short-term rental is probably appropriate, so they made this recommendation. So that's why I think it's an extraordinary or, uh, an opportunity that we can do without going through the, the whole public hearing process.
Okay, any other discussion? Move to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Um, five in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, do I have a motion on the emergency clause?
Make a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Ken made a motion to approve the emergency clause from Pat seconded it, any discussion? Vote.
Okay, Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Five in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the emergency, uh, clause passes, the ordinance passes. And once again, okay, need to run a, another copy and, uh, I quit running two copies of everything because half the time we had to make changes, so. Trying to save paper. Moving on then to ordinance twenty-two-three dash.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. An ordinance amending the planning and zoning regulations, appendix thirty dash zero-one, fee schedule for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas and declaring an emergency. Do I have a, have a motion to pass ordinance twenty-two-three oh twenty-five?
So move.
Lynn made a motion, second.
I second.
Ken seconded it. Lynn, you wanna read that one?
Whereas on about October fourth, twenty-two, the city council of Holiday Island adopted ordinance twenty-two dash six to provide planning and zoning regulations, a zoning map and a zoning map table for within the city. And whereas the city planning commission and city council acted in good faith to establish a fee schedule for the purposes of recovering costs incurred by the city to process activities regarding development and zoning. And whereas the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has determined it necessary to amend the fee schedule of Holiday Island to provide districts of compatible uses for unified development for the elimination of non-conformants and for other matters of general welfare of the city. And whereas this constitutes an exceptional circumstance, the city council of Holiday Island now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island and desires to amend the planning and zoning regulations by ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section one, the appendix thirty dash zero-one fee schedule amendment is hereby adopted as illustrated below. What has changed in this ordinance is the addition of this category, incidental subdivision application. It's for that process in our Texas for lot splits, minor subdivisions, property line adjustments, and correction plaques. I'm recommending in this a hundred dollars based on the fact that we are only charging uh, two hundred dollars for subdivision of ten units, as well as down here of two hundred dollars for this. And conditional use applications are a hundred dollars. The other addition to this is adding the, the conditional use application short-term rental fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. As a result of us passing the ordinance twenty-three dash sixteen last month, we put a fee in there of a hundred and fifty dollars, it wasn't in the table, so I added it to the table as well. So that a hundred and fifty dollar line and this section are the two, and this is my recommendation that we haven't discussed. I'll continue. Whoops. I gotta finish, I have to finish reading it. Section two, that the planning and zoning regulations shall be updated, reprinted, duly certified, filed with the city recorder treasurer in the city office and made available on the city website within thirty days. Declaration of emergency, it is hereby found and determined that the amendments to the planning and zoning regulations shall be adopted immediately in order to provide for, uh, provide an appropriate zoning district for within the city of Holiday Island and to align with the understanding and urgent development desires of interested persons. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist in this act being immediately necessary for the preservation and protection of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the city and its citizens shall become effective on the date of its passage and approval by the city, by the mayor, passed and approved this date.
Any discussion?
The first one, you talked about incidental subdivision application, is it?
Yes.
That's true.
And again, this was written by the Hy-Sid project, yeah?
Yes, um, yeah, when I first started working with Hy-Sid on that project for a lot, I thought it would be a rezoning, and what I thought about it is not, it's a lot split, they're taking a parcel and splitting it or they're subdividing. And then I started doing the research, we didn't have the form developed after passing it, so I've got busy, got the form developed, and I thought, well, we need an amendment to the, to the fee schedule as well. So the discussion is, is a hundred dollars appropriate for that?
Any other discussion? Move to a vote. Do I determine if it's appropriate or not?
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Five in favor, Mr. Mayor.
The ordinance passes, and do I have a motion on the emergency clause?
Make a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Ken made a motion to approve the emergency clause. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? Move to vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Five in favor, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then that one passes. All right, last thing on the agenda is the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty-six. An ordinance authorizing the city of Holiday Island to make electronic fund dispersments of municipal funds to pay E accounts in financial institutions and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty-six?
So move.
I'll second it.
Who made the motion?
Lynn.
Lynn made a motion to approve and Pat seconded it. Should I read it?
Okay, I can. Okay.
Since it is yours.
Okay. Whereas the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, is needed from time to time to make fund transfers by electronic payment directly into pay E accounts at financial institutions and whereas authorizing the city of Holiday Island to disperse electronic payments allows the town to implement efficient, accurate, secure, and for timely payment and accounting procedures. Whereas Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-nine one oh five permits such electronic payment methods in payment of any account allowed against the municipality if authorized by ordinance. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section one, a municipal official or employee responsible for the dispersments for the city of Holiday Island shall have authority to disperse electronic funds payments directly into pay E's accounts in financial institutions where necessary for payment of any expense allowed against the municipality. Section two, the dispersment of the city of Holiday Island funds shall include adequate supporting documentation for the dispersment. Section three, the electronic funds payment method used by the city of Holiday Island shall provide for internal accounting controls and documentation for audit and accounting purposes recommended by Arkansas Legislative Audit Information Systems Best Practices. Section four, the electronic funds payment method established by this ordinance shall not be implemented unless it has been approved by the Legislative Joint Auditing Committee. Section five, emergency clause. The city council hereby finds and determines that due to the urgent and immediate need to make timely and secure payments for amounts owed to payees for obligations of the municipality, these provisions shall be made effective immediately. As such, an emergency as hereby declared to exist shall be enforced and effective in effect from and after its passage and approval. Pass and approve on this date. I'll just comment, I have run this by our person that did our legislative audit already, and he okayed it. It will need to go to the Legislative Audit Committee, which I think is a legislative committee for approval. I commented about one of the problems I've had with checks being stolen in North Little Rock. And as such, I have already, I have not sent a payment that is due to them because I don't want it to be stolen. At times we have things like, uh, the Carol Electric bill, I feel could be on auto pay, uh, the Carroll County Solid Waste, which I just got the bill today, or yesterday, because I was gone last week, and it was due last Friday. The Cox bill.
Are we talking about debit? Aren't I talking about PayPal and what are you talking about?
No, no, this would be automatic debit.
Yeah.
Or I could schedule with our software, I can also schedule ACH payments, but I hesitate to do that because the bank told me they will process it, but every time I want to process one or process a file, it's twelve dollars. So I think I can schedule like the credit cards to make a payment. And the credit cards, if they don't get it, it's forty bucks.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I just, I, I think we all use debit for utility payments now, just down there.
Correction on the second whereas.
Barb has a correction on the second whereas.
Uh, it says allows the town, there should be C.
My sense is.
It's authorized in city of Holiday Island to dispose electronic payments, allows the town to. It should be C.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's it, that's it.
All right, any other discussion on the?
Take over for a minute, she's not here to discuss it.
Hey, everybody needs a mint bigger.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Then we'll move on to, uh, the vote, roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, do I have a motion on the emergency clause? Lynn made a motion to approve the emergency clause and Pat seconded it. Any discussion? Move, move to the vote on the emergency clause.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the ordinance passes. That's the end of the agenda items. Moving on to public comments, three minutes. It's nine minutes total. All right, council member comments. Wes, you want to give us
Sure.
three minutes on the clerk's workshop?
Cut me off when I'm done.
There you go.
Clock is running.
I got nine seconds, extra. Okay, well, I attended the Clark's Institute in, uh, north, in North Little Rock, yeah, a month ago, and that's why I missed the meeting, and I just wanted to give a brief report on some of the things we talked about. I was questioning whether, how did I want to go to that? And did I need to go, go to that? And I'm glad I did. Um, we had, uh, first, we had reports from, uh, John, uh, Wogginson talks about what, uh, councils can do, what treasures can do, what recorder treasures do. As I commented earlier, he reported that ordinances must be read in the entirety on the first reading unless two-thirds of the council votes to, uh, suspend. He said to use resolutions to use budgets, which I think we have now. One year we used ordinance, but, um, since that, we've done resolutions. Uh, they need to be published in a reasonable time to be effective, and I think there's in our ordinance that we passed about publishing those, or posting those, that was covered. Talked about freedom of information. He said requests do not have to be in writing. No records response has to be in writing, and, um, let's see. And then there was something else I was going to comment on too. Oh, we talked about, uh, where some things go, like we're interested on our investments. Oh, he's reported, general revenues are any revenues that is not restricted to some other purpose, and that's the way we've been interpreting that. Also, one item, bids do not have to be based on the lowest current bid. They can be based on life cost. So you could, you could accept a higher bid if over the lifetime it's cheaper. Said, uh, fast-track permits and increase in permit fees must be approved within sixty days, or they're automatically approved. Talked about water studies, which we don't have. A gal from G I S talked to us, and her comment that I noted was that they would help in, uh, setting up wards, which I guess we're past that.
But they did help us set up our wards.
Okay, okay. Uh, mayors are supposed to attach a time sheets, which I think Dan has been doing. We've got some time sheets are supposed to show time in and out, which we need, one needs to work on. I need, we need, um, rules, regulations on accountable reimbursements, plans for expenses. What's an accountable plan? And I have, I know what that should be, so.
Okay.
That'd be like when employees are reimbursed expenses. If it's not in a, on an accountable plan, it's taxable income. So, um, legislative audit, talk, talked about cybersecurity. Talked about minutes. I think that was John again. The clerk recorder has custody, but does not have to, uh, do the preparation. If there's no quorum at a meeting, you still need minutes. I think we're okay there.
I thought if we had no quorum, we can't even call the meeting to order. There'd be no minutes to pay.
We'd have minutes to state that.
Okay.
But there was no quorum.
All right.
Yeah, all ordinances must be read in full for the first reading at least, unless there's a vote, uh, to read title only.
Oh, oh, what was that?
Ordinances.
Title.
All ordinances. So second, third reading, you don't need to read the whole thing. Then we had two hours. A gal from North Little Rock talked about business licenses, which I was particularly interested in. They had four thousand five hundred and thirty-three licenses issued, and they don't know how many more there should be. It's gone foreign to general fund. In home-based businesses, they do license home-based businesses, but there's not to be any customers or clients allowed.
What's a business without customers? Somebody has an eBay business and that's all I know.
That's a customer.
That's still a customer.
There could be some sort of a management company, or maybe somebody working on the internet.
You mean a customer that's, yeah.
Yeah.
There's no customers.
No, no customers.
Physically coming to their.
Physically coming.
You have no customers, you have not learned a business.
Yeah, I should have explained that.
Okay, I, we should have assumed.
Says you can have a desk, chair, and printer, but I think there's not supposed to be any inventory. Nonprofits are also supposed to register, but there's no fee. They require the tax ID and a sales tax permit. And I think somewhere I had also, they have to be approved by planning and zoning before they can file a permit. Short-term rentals, their owner occupied, uh, the fee is, the annual fee is fifty dollars. And they have to do a zoning application first. If they're non-occup, non-owner occupied, it's fifty dollars per person fee. So like if you had occupancy of eight, it'd be four hundred bucks.
Wow, wow, that's a bit.
Well, how do you do that? I can see changes day to day.
It's based on that.
Put your advertising.
Oh, maximum, got you.
They also, uh, door-to-door salesmen are supposed to have a license.
Is there such a thing anymore?
I don't know.
People knock on my door, but not usually just selling stuff.
Otherwise, they're not supposed to be there. Then I can't remember who this was, but reported that banks have, all, it said all banks have money for community resource. It's resource grants.
Oh. So we should be asking.
And they need to spend it.
Okay.
Well, let's go see Nicole.
And then, um.
We heard you had money and we bought it.
Well, doubt is spent.
For code enforcement, well, we were told, where they have three copies of ordinances, which we don't right now, so.
What was that?
Three copies of ordinances.
We are two.
I read two.
Yeah, that's what we were told. Do some research on that.
Why do we need three copies?
And it talked about fees for getting codified. And, uh, our, our CSA accounting software can do, uh, receipts and business licenses. So I had that, and I talked to Dan, I think we've got that in the budget, so. I'll say, one night, wasn't on the program, I think it was like eight of us got together and went to, uh, rental, short-term rental house, and a couple of the clerks had rented, and sat, and we sat and talked for two and a half hours about problems that some of them have had and they had, and, you know, some people were totally new and learning, and some were highly experienced, so that was very interesting.
You didn't have anybody to do it all? You didn't have anybody to do it all?
Well, the gal from Eureka was there. Let's see, Eureka. I sat next to a gal where Prairie Gold, some lakes cleared down, and it was between a gal from southwest Arkansas and southeast Arkansas. and southeast Arkansas, clear down in the corner.
Down in our city?
Yeah. But there was like ninety people there, so.
Wow.
I've been there.
Well, that's good to network with those folks though, since we are so new. Yeah.
Okay, thanks Wes. Any other council member comments?
The planning and zoning, um, has some more work to do. The incidental subdivision form that I developed has all the content that I borrowed extensively from Tonti Town and made the words fit like I typically do and the kinds of things that are needed. But going through the process map of how the process works, it's been an untold number of hours doing this because it got a little bit complex. There's nothing, there's very little in our planning and zoning regulations for incidental subdivisions for an appeal process. So I documented one in the form anticipating that I would get the text done, recommended to the planning and zoning in the next meeting or so and then bring it to the city council. So I've, I've gone ahead a little bit with putting all this, these loops in here for what's approved and how it's denied and what, how it gets done, but I had it because the process might be imminent and not having a formal process in case there's an appeal from a denial or, or an exa- an application is accepted and someone else wants to appeal that decision, we've gotta have something in place. So I mapped it basically following what we do with conditional use permits and rezoning. So it's nothing unusual, it's just that I put all loops in there, I just need to document it and revise.
Okay. And that would make a heck of a quorum maze next following.
Yeah, yeah, when I first started, everything was all crossed, but I finally got it untangled. Secondly, um, we passed ordinance twenty-three dash sixteen on the short-term rental, um, conditions that the planning commission would use. And in that conversation that we had, I believe in this meeting in our city council, we talked about informing the property owners properly. So we need to get a little letter out to them because this, uh, ordinance is in effect and it goes into penalty phase the first of July of twenty-four. So we need to get the word out.
Yep, I already made myself a note.
Good, good, thank you.
Okay, anything else? And moving on to scheduling. Chris and I at least, and maybe that's why Peggy's here, discussed that, um, before our next city council, regular city council meeting, we might wanna have a little open house and ribbon cutting. So the, um, next meeting is eleven twenty-one and, um, I would propose that we do this at maybe five o'clock?
I don't know, meeting day, yeah. That is.
We're gonna have donuts?
Well, I just bear in mind that's Thanksgiving week.
Yeah.
Broads.
People will be traveling.
Some people.
Broads and potato bakery, we're not making any more of those.
And make a note, Ken will bring donuts.
Yes, I did, I duly noted.
Ken was saying. If Ken will bring donuts, if, if Ken, it's the twenty-first.
Eleven twenty-five.
Twenty-one, yeah.
Twenty-one cookies, cupcakes, there you go.
If it's, if it's your suggestion, then you have to do it, so that.
I didn't make a suggestion, I just asked.
We took, we took it as a suggestion.
What suggestion, Ken?
Twenty-first.
November?
Yes.
Eleven twenty-one.
Yes.
Is it, is it gonna be a meeting or just an open house?
No, the open house would be at five.
Open house at five. Ribbon cutting at five. We may start an open house a little earlier than that, but.
We're gonna paint those other doors facing.
Not before November twenty-first probably. Um, okay, then, uh, I don't know of any special meetings, but workshops, we need to have a budget workshop and at some point we need to have a follow-up, uh, we need to follow up on the business license. Um, I kinda think we need to have another workshop on that because there was, there were several loose ends at the end of the last, the last time it was discussed, so. The budget workshop is the priority one. So do you think we could do that the week of November sixth sometime?
What day is that? Tuesday? Is that another Tuesday or?
The week of.
The Monday is.
November sixth is a Monday.
Yeah.
And the calendar for is that night.
Is the sixth?
Yes, sixth.
Okay, so we don't wanna do it then?
And the seventh is election day, if that means.
Is, is there any elections going on around here?
I don't think so.
I don't think I've seen any in the paper.
How about school?
I don't think so.
So what are you gonna do, November seventh then?
Works for me.
What time is it? Be the date?
Budget workshop on, on the seventh, I'd do it during the day.
I have a doctor appointment at eight o'clock, I would should be, yeah, by nine thirty, I would think.
So maybe ten o'clock on, uh, on the seventh?
I have no idea whether I got anything, I just have to look. My calendar's on the. Let's.
It's Tuesday.
Yeah, ten AM. I guess I have it, it's pretty easy to make phone in there.
If we have it at ten AM, then it will probably not run more than two hours.
There you go. Self-regulating, we're bringing broths.
Yeah, next time brings donuts.
Your house? You're close.
I've got broths left over. Bringing my blasted broth.
All right, how about, uh, how about a, uh, another workshop on business licenses, do we wanna?
Why?
Because there was a lot, there were really, there were quite a few loose ends, well, a lot of it related to home businesses.
I thought that was the only issue.
No, but even if it's the only issue, it still needs to be hashed out. Um, I'm o- I'm open, uh, I'm free the whole month except Thanksgiving Day.
Somewhere I gotta, I know I gotta go someplace.
How about, how about the fourteenth?
Fourteenth probably did. Fourteenth at six PM is our planning commission.
And I have an auxiliary lunch on that day.
Okay, then we won't do it that day.
I could do it on Monday.
I like Wednesday mornings.
Wednesday morning, works for me.
What did he say?
The fifteen.
The fifteen.
The fifteen. And a clock, nine and a clock.
Um, ten o'clock.
Okay, what are we gonna do next month? We're gonna have meetings. Gee. I thought I got off the planning commission.
You're off the planning commission.
I said, I thought when we got off the planning commission, we're gonna have some meetings, we're gonna, we're coming back. That's a set of three sitting.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if you're talking about having the business license workshop at ten AM, that's not good if you expect some business people to be there.
That's true.
Maybe have it at, you know, five or six or something like that.
Uh, we could do that.
Six PM?
Six.
Six PM, eleven seven.
Yeah, six PM, eleven fifteen.
Fifteenth, I thought, eight AM.
Thanks, Linda.
And the fifteenth?
Fifteenth, six PM.
Yes.
I just don't wanna go through the same shit. I'm not going through that again. I'm not much of an evening person. I didn't do, I'm bad cold today, I can't. Well, we ready for a motion?
I'm ready, any announcements?
I'm trying to figure out when my phone is screwed up here, but, okay. Any other, uh, scheduling? Announcements? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Lynn made a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
I'd like to talk about this for a minute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.